Board of Alderman Meeting, the regular meeting for August the 11th, is called to order. At this time, if you will rest on your feet, we're going to ask that Reverend Johnny Harbin, pastor of Marlboro Church of Christ at 1425 Marlboro, here in the city of Camden, would come and lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for our city. Father, we thank you for this community. Father, I pray that you would continue to knit us together. Father, we're mindful tonight of those that have come before us. Father, those that have worked so hard to allow us to achieve the victories that we have. Father, to build the bridges that have been built. We thank you, Father, for their work and their efforts. I pray, Father, that we would continue that good work. Give us the wisdom to know when and how the bridges need to be built. Father, give us the courage to say and to do things that need to be done for the betterment of our community. Father, give us perseverance so that we would remain faithful to that task. Father, as we come to you tonight, we are mindful of so many in our community that need your help. Father, we pray for our children. Father, we pray for them as they get ready to go back to school in the next few weeks. Father, we are mindful of every teacher and every administrator, every cafeteria worker, and every custodial staff. Father, we know that they are just embarking on new territory, and we ask your blessings and your hand protection on them. Father, we pray that you would be with our medical professionals in our community. Father, we thank you for their good work. Father, we pray so much for those that suffer right now. Father, I pray for your healing hand on them. Father, whether it is COVID, whether it's cancer, whether it's Alzheimer's, whatever that need may be. Father, they are our, they're our people, and they are our community. They're our family. We ask you to be with them. Oh, Father, I pray that you especially be with our elderly. I'm mindful of them that are in nursing homes today. Father, those that have been at home and been isolated for so long. Oh, Father, may you bless them, may you cover them and protect them in a way that only you can. Father, be with this group tonight, our city leaders, as they discuss the efforts that involve our city to grow and to become something, Father, that we, Father, we still may be looking to imagine of just what you can do here. Oh, but, Father, we place it in your hands. We humble ourselves before you. We ask you to be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you please remain standing? We're going to face the back for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, and may this sing. At this time, our city clerk, Mrs. Donna Stewart, is called to roll.
Armit.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Moore. Simmons.
Here.
Askew.
Here.
Stell.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
President. And we have before us now the opportunity to look at our minutes for the regular meeting of July 14, 2020. Do you have a motion? To move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Ready for discussion? Those in favor, use the voting sign of yea.
Aye.
Those who oppose, use voting sign of nay. I'd have it there. And now we have before us the acceptance of the financial report for July of 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been motion and second, ready for discussion. Those in favor, use the voting sign of yea, of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use voting sign of nay. I'd have it again. At this time, we're going to prepare for a time of audience participation. If you'd be so kind as to come to the podium. When you get to the podium, we welcome you to, you have Liz.
I have Liz.
When she calls your name, come to the podium. Please state your name and your address. And you have three minutes, and our timekeeper is so kind to keep us on point. Oh, our timekeeper, all right, who do we have, Mr.?
First, Ms. Rochelle Williams. Rochelle Williams, 212 Parker Avenue. Tonight, I'm speaking in reference to the resolution that's being presented. While I agree with the website that contains our city budget, meeting minutes, and city business in the interest of transparency, I have some questions. The city website is maintained by J.C. Productions. Camden.Arkansas.gov redirects you to ExploreCamden.com. The alderman that wrote the ordinance or resolution tonight is an employee of J.C. Productions. In my opinion, that's a conflict and not very transparent as a researcher was required to find out this information. The city pays $28,000 a year to J.C. Productions to maintain and update city information. This is not an official City of Camden website. The actual city has no control over this website or its contents. Much of the information on the website is outdated, and I do have a packet here that can be passed around. Highlighted things are, that is straight from the website, printed out. Highlighted things are outdated. We've been dealing with COVID-19. There are no updates from any departments on the website since March. The mayor has held numerous press conferences in an attempt to keep citizens informed, but none of these are on the website nor are they promoted by J.C. Productions. According to my research, the city would have to pay a fee for every meeting that J.C. Productions broadcasts. This is the reason that no city meetings are ever broadcast unless it's done by the mayor or radio works via Facebook Live. My biggest question is, what are my tax dollars paying for J.C. Productions to do? As it stands now, who do we reach out to if the information is outdated? Is it Mr. Bell? The assistant mayor, the city clerk, the mayor? There is no accountability the way things are set up right now. The ordinance is very generically written, not very transparent, and that's kind of weird when it's, the ordinance is all about transparency. It would make more sense to me for the city to take that $28,000 and hire an IT person that can maintain and update an official City of Camden website. This way, we would have a responsible person if things were not updated in a timely manner. In closing, I would ask that when this ordinance goes to vote, Mr. Bell abstained from the vote since he has a financial interest in the outcome of the resolution as it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Who do we have next?
Next is Sandra Lee.
Good seeing you, sir. Glad you made it.
My name is Sandra Lee, at 603 Texas Street. And first, I'd just like to say that as a citizen, I appreciate all of you. And I am at this time running for council position here, the Zone 3, Position 2. And one of the things I would like to ask today is, since I'm out seeking and talking to a lot of the people in my community, is a lot of them do not know what zone they are in or who's over their zone area. So I would like to ask if you all could put on your agenda to post signs that would let people know what zone they're in. If there's something that could be, polls that could be put out stating zone areas so that people will know how to contact the officials that they would probably need to contact. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, Ms. Lee called me, and we talked about this for some time. We also mentioned the website with its whatever problems or whatever you want to call it. That's something that could carry that and have that presented for the availability of some of the people. We also talked about for those that don't have internet, what could we do? But the whole conversation we had, we getting information. We've got to educate the voters. There's a lot of things going on in this election that I don't know if everybody know about. Post office situations and certain things. But I would, I would ask you to get involved with the news and what's going on that. I know it's a lot of falsehoods out there, and we know that's what it's about in some of these elections. But find out the truth. It's available. I go to the courthouse. I read a lot of things concerning the election this year. This is going to be a serious election, and we really need to know the truth. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Next is Mr. James Manley.
My name is James Manley. I live at 796 Scales Street here in Camden. And I have a complaint that when the law is cut, they just blow the grass out into the street, and it clogs up our drains. Some of the grass that you were growing, take the milk from growing up. Also, in the fall time, they blow the leaves out into the street and makes our community look bad. And I'm asking if the council or if this court group make an argument so that this won't happen again.
And, Mr. Mayor, once again, Reverend Manley and I talked about that. I believe there is an ordinance on the records about grass clippings in the street. I'm pretty sure it is.
If you'd like me to address that. My name is Scott Atkins. I'm the code enforcement officer of the City of Camden. There is actually already an ordinance in place. It is illegal for you to jump yard, dump yard waste in the debris, particularly in the storm drains. It's a challenge with just one code enforcement employee on the street to catch this being done. But we are aware of it. We've already addressed some of those issues, and we're doing the best we can to enforce that ordinance. It's a well-written ordinance. It carries a lot away with it. It's just a matter of being able to have the abilities to catch everyone doing it. We're really happy to see the yards getting cut and mowed. We do not want the grass clippings put out in the yard. It is illegal to dump in storm drains. Public Works is also aware of it. So whenever I notified them that there is some dumping being done in the storm drain, they, Director Franklin, since it's guys out quick, and they get that cleaned up. And if you see this happening, we ask that you call our office at 870-837-5508 and report it immediately and let us know. And we will take the appropriate enforcement action to ensure that those people are held accountable. And if you have any other questions regards to code enforcement, please don't hesitate to give us a call. Ms. Jeanette is fantastic. She works in the office there, takes all the phone calls. If you call and the line is busy, I promise you there's nothing wrong with the phone. It's just that heavy of a call volume for our office, and we will get to you as soon as we can. And I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. But if any residents in the City of Camden find a violation of the ordinance, please let us know, and we will get out there and take the appropriate action. Thanks, sir.
One of the issues that we have been up against is that out of the past few years of prosecuting people who were bringing nuisances, et cetera, we're having a hard time getting the monies back. Our city presently loses about $10,000 a year cutting people's yards for their money that we don't recoup because the courts have not been favorable to us in the lawsuits. However, I spoke with Judge Graham on Monday, and Judge Graham will, he actually promised that on this go-around, he will support the city if the law says that he can do something about it. He said he would.
Just to reinforce what the mayor's talking about, I've only been here a little over a year. Total number of cases actually prosecuted in court carrying a fine was one since I've been here over a year. I know in my office, I can show you the stat tracker of when I started, every enforcement action we've taken, up to including citations. And I'll be presenting that report to the aldermen to the city council all the later time. But just to inform the community, the only one that was actually taken action upon was two years over. Two years before we actually got prosecuted. It continued. Very oftentimes, if you receive a citation of code enforcement, it's the same as receiving a citation for stealing things. It's the exact same form. You're violating a local city ordinance, and we have a team that is willing to prosecute that. And what the mayor's talking about is we've reached out to the newly-elected judge and asked for some help in saying, instead of putting those in state of judgment and allowing it to continue to be a nuisance, continue to be a nuisance, we go ahead and drop the hammer right away, execute the maximum punishment possible under the law, and kind of set the precedence to encourage people to take pride in your community. Because that's what it comes down to, is actual pride in your community. And all of you here, I know I have run into you because you wouldn't be here if you didn't. But that is what we're facing, that's what we're up against. But I assure you, the code enforcement office, along with the mayor and his staff, are working very hard with other entities around the county to make sure that we do all that we can legally to beautify the city. And I appreciate your patience while we get there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Also, I want to add to Scott, our code enforcement. Thank you, Reverend Manley, for bringing that to our attention as well. Just want to remind the community that our Public Works equipment is somewhat limited. And the grass and the leaves and everything, that kind of stuff tears up our street sweepers and everything. It clogs it up, have to pull more maintenance. And if we want to keep our streets clean, like Scott said, if we see something, let's say something.
That's right.
So we can keep our equipment going and keep our streets clean as possible. That stuff does tear up our equipment. Thank you. Who do we have next?
Next is Mr. William McCoy.
Mr. William McCoy.
Good evening. My name is William McCoy. I reside at 313 Hoover Street here in the City of Camden. My question to you, gentlemen and ladies, on this evening is in reference to the A and P Commission and the Airport Commission. There are no meet, there aren't any minutes in reference to the meetings that have been taking place. There are minutes for school boards. There are minutes for city council. There are minutes for planning commission. There are minutes for board of adjustments. But there are no minutes for the A and P Commission or the Airport Commission.
There are, there are minutes for A and P.
There are?
Do those ever talk?
Yes. No, we did call up and something to that, but keep going, sir. We, we, we do have, we did have an issue. I don't know how you.
I can't locate it.
I, well, I, I don't know how you would, what if you asked, and then we were missing, I'm not cited. I don't know the difference. But we don't have minutes, and I don't know how you would know, but we don't have minutes for September. But we didn't have them for September, October, November, and December. And I got called in on that. I don't know how that's public yet. But they, but I am, I was called in to the auditors for three months of minutes that did not, that were difficult to find, right?
Right, September is the only one that we missed. I found the others.
Okay, we were able to recoup the others. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. But in some ways, in some ways, you have a point. So continue, sir.
So my thing is, if I'm a taxpayer, I should have the right to know whatever's going on in my community, regardless of who the commission holds in certain positions and what have you. And also, since I'm standing here, I'm actually running for a position of ward two, seat two for this upcoming election as well. And just trying to make everything transparency for everybody in the city to have a fair view of everything that takes place within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Mr. Willie Cooper.
Mr. Willie Cooper.
Mr. Willie Cooper, 544 Louisiana Avenue, Camden, Arkansas. What I do have is a paper for all the commissioners to read here, please.
Thank you, sir. Joe. One more, please. Two. You and me.
Mr. Cooper.
Oh, okay.
Sir, I need two over here.
Two more?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Jane.
You have one. Go there, go. Give you a second to read over that. And what that consists of is, that's my letter of resolution. The letter of resolution from the planning commission and board of adjustments. I've served on that commission for approximately 10, 11 years, somewhere in there. And I think it's time for me to move on and allow someone else to take that position. As president or as chairman of the planning commission, I highly recommend Mr. Terry Thornhill. Mr. Terry Thornhill has worked diligently side by side with me and assist each other in all manners. He's out looking for Camden and the better Camden. Also, I'd like to make a recommendation for my replacement on that commission. Not only the planning commission, but the board of adjustments. Those two, those two different there. And that is going to be Mr. Jeffrey Franklin, the pastor of Greater St. Paul Baptist Church. I've been talking and working with Mr. Franklin as far as the commissions. Let him read, let him study. I think he'll make a great replacement, Mr. Mayor. I think he'll make a great replacement. That commission is a, you have to have the City of Camden in heart. For, you have to have the City of Camden. You have to have the people. You have to have the people in heart for that position to do diligence. Treat everybody right, treat everybody the same. You can't, you can't show favoritism. You have to make everything transparent. You have to make the people know that it's out there what changes to be made and what changes are going to be made. That's what that's all about. Okay? Also, at this time, I would like to personally thank this out in Galveston, Galveston, for serving as an alderman for so many years. This Galveston year done a great job. A great job.
We owe you a whole lot, but we can't pay. I don't know why. This is coming out of my heart. This is going to be right here. It's coming out of my heart, all in the water. I don't know why. A year, a year, a year. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to have I am sitting at the position of Mr. Galveston. The fourth and fifth. I feel that I know I'm part of the business to be a part of the management of the board of adjustments. When I take on this task of getting out of the middle of the people. Getting out of, getting out of the dark side of the weather in November, trying to do something that needs to be had. I'm not a member of a whole lot of people of a world man, but everybody, you do. It's not, it's not a hope. It's not a hope at all, you know? It's about Camden. It's about people of Camden. We can do great things. We have a great way to go. And I said that, we have a great way to go. And with everybody's help, we can definitely do it. We can definitely do it. That's all I have to say. So you appreciate it. I certainly enjoy the vibe and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I owe you that. But all right, who knows? All right. Well, thank you so much for the audience, for the attention and the debate. I want to take a moment and for myself, to have a brief memory of when I became a member of the others who are already serving in elected positions. And they, thank you. They are, they are elected officials present beside our own board. All right. And I'm glad to see so many of our friends who are in the middle of the day. And we can't say enough about our children who are not good at the city, but that is good. And I'm glad that they're all getting paid for the work that we make these steps toward. Going back to students, I want to be at the leadership of our government. On tonight, instead of meeting the board of board, we want to look at our time for our annual walk and sewer field to Mr. David Richardson, who is the manager of Camden Water and Water. Mr. Richardson, you're on the other end.
Uh, I'm happy to raise a trophy to the master plan that we're able to be on water, sure. And so it kind of goes up both, is indeed, is the unexpected part of the local facility of a federal advantage of partnership or a full hundred thousand dollars. And we know that it's one of your dogs that recovered this unexpected car. And we're all willing to buy it in the second phase of this water, this water treatment without any issues. We should get a policy. We bring a little sage from the silver bar, a tray from the 2000, 2012, 500, 350. And you were about to say, that's my decision. You have proven there. That's all there. We raised thirty-four. After all, we raised thirty four, we said, we, 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 a location there, and you're on the downside of the block, you've been over the, I meant the block, you can't, and we're basically, we're continuing to work on a schedule system that's like a vacation between a water plant and a water tank, and since my last report, we made a wire, the John, the hell, I knew, yeah, so, we're using the engine and the color, and the outside, and I thought, we had the yard for conditions, we did right hand maintenance for one year, so they did that, so, but, if you have a twenty nine, we'll be painting, be serious with now, and old, and old tanks, and then in the year of two thousand and twenty two, we're finished with the project, with the painting, the building inside, and we begin to work on a new replacement program, which here we're in six hundred, ready to leave, and so, we're completed, we should be having close to half of our system completed, and here can we hope to have that completed by the year end of two thousand and twenty two as well. We are, I'm working on installing a permanent gas generator in Mulruth, hop station there, and this recent outage that we had for several days, we've come to realize that was one of our weak points, that in the event that we had outages for several days in there, we're kind of going to find, so we'll be taking action to get that done here, by this year. We have collected our lead and copper sampling, and those have been sent off to the Arizona Department of Health to be analyzed. We do this every three years, and in the past, we've always had good reports on that, and I expect the same this program as well. Of course, and every time in summer, we're always out in the woods with the bush oil cleaning out sewer runways and water main runways, until we continue to do that. Our annual system flush that was scheduled for March thirtieth was placed on hold due to COVID and the hardship that's going to put on our customers during that particular time, and we have not yet, that to be done, as of right now. As the wastewater plant, that we clarified that the damage is prepared and back online, and the plant is able to meet compliance, all of it is all fine, with no problems. The wastewater distribution, the mechanical, has completed, replacing three sewer stations over on Maylock, Old Creek, and Mathis, and those stations are working great. And as I mentioned in my last report at the time, we're working on extending the line for good game in Mount Holly, into town that would help take to relieve some of the, sometime on winter time rains in Fairview condition, that was recently completed last week, and it is working quite well. We do still, this summer will be going down, down Holly, to get clean and load line in that area, and make sure that we've got all that cleaned up. And also, we have replaced three hundred feet of eight inch sewer vein over on Pearl Street between Rich and Makin, due to a couple accidents there. That's kind of a short summer for the event, actually, we're heading for six months, so I'll answer any questions you may have.
I've got one, I was curious, what do you think, or what's the status on the installation of the sewer?
Progress is being made, I understand that the real holdup is getting material, COVID's got that slowed down, and of course, a lot of people are doing the clogging, so getting their hands on, on some material is the big issue. I think that's to make all that, well, it will be a course, but nothing's holding, so I think we're still targeting closer, the first of the year, as far as being able to build and place and ready to go.
First of all, Mr. Richards, you were coming in, we did a court, got a couple questions. You mentioned in the month of April and May that you did not charge any late fee or doing a disconnect. With the, this number showed that, I mean, because of COVID, we had a spike in people being laid or not being able to pay, or, I know you did it out of good faith and everything, and, but I just noticed you did it for the month of April and May, and I guess you're back on now, right?
Yes, sir. We did, we did notice that after the first month, and I didn't publicly in there, I said, but after the first month, we noticed a slight increase, the second month kicked in, and that, that trip, so the word was getting out, some people were billing water bills that were in the amount of two hundred dollars, and there's no way we could forgive any kind of bills like that, so it was time to get them back on track, so in the month of June, we did go back to our standard disconnect and late fee charges.
Second question, you mentioned phase two, and if there might be some scale backs or cutbacks, with that project, can you elaborate on, what do you mean, a scale back to a cutback in terms of, I mean, I'm looking at, we've been into this contract, and we're raising the rates of the community with the water rates, and.
With the phases, were intended to be five million dollar phases, so we completed the first five million, and we wanted to do a second phase of five million. But before I come back to you asking for another rate increase to help pay for that additional five million, I'm going to make do with what I got, and that means that I need to turn a five million dollar project into a four million, and that's my goal.
Do you have any contractors?
A lot, sir.
Not yet.
Can you install the planning stages over for this year, and we'll get back on track next year.
Oh, you got a question. Oh, you got a question there, I was going to ask you about, you know, is that we going to cut back? Let me be a little specific on something here. You talked about the generator project, and you're downsizing, I just want to know, is it going to affect the generator project? How are your priorities in this?
On the generator, is he going to affect it?
Yes.
No, sir.
Okay, so it's still budgetable, you got it?
Yeah, I've already budgeted for that, so that'll come out of this current budget.
Okay, now, a question about that collapsed line, is that due to age, or something on that lane?
Well, first of all, is the ground bad, terrible, I mean, in that area, quick sand, you get down ten feet, and this line is at fourteen feet, and if it wasn't not bedded correctly.
Oh, the line we don't have.
It's going to do this, it's going to sink in and fall out, and there's nothing to do but to dig it up, rebed it, relayer it.
Okay. The reason I asked about that, I had a, this is an issue I got later on, I'll talk with the board about, and everybody else. I've been seeing a lot of trucks come through some of the residential areas, log trucks, heavy duty trucks, I don't know if they're getting lost or what, but I know, remember I had a problem, my advisor one time heard a collapsed line because of the way to those trucks, but that's something that the board and I get into.
Thank you so much for your report, sir. And now, we're calling for A business, I think we're about O business, and so we moved them to new business, and a new business, if you don't mind, will you switch the resolution number to twenty one twenty?
So it's correct, twenty? Twenty, and I think it's.
This will be twenty one twenty on the agenda. Okay. So, resolution twenty one twenty is, that would be included by the.
Set up. Resolution twenty one twenty, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, requiring certain materials to be posted on the city website.
Your motion?
So moved.
A second.
Moved, and.
Second.
Second, right? All right, ready for discussion?
I'd like to address a few things.
First, let me just say, I'm not sure exactly where Ms. Williams got her information, but there are some inaccuracies in it, I guarantee you, at no time did our company ever receive twenty eight thousand for any of these websites. What we did do was we did three separate sites, one for the city, one for the chamber, one for Odet, which is Dean Camden. We also did a splash page so that we could start directing traffic to one place. This was a decision that was made by leadership back at a previous administration. If the mayor would like to go a different direction with the city website, they're more than welcome. I will say that J C Productions is not paid by the city to update these sites. We do have a web hosting contract, the city is not billed for that, it is billed through Los Angeles Partnership for Economic Development. It's not a lie, I don't have the exact number, I do know it is, it is under two thousand for the year for all of these sites, and that includes a bunch of emails as well. There are, we have done training with the mayor, with the department heads for the city, on how to properly update this site. I did it in the previous administration with Mayor Fitzaleen, at the time, you know, she chose not to have other department heads. After Mayor Lockwood's office, we did get the department heads together, that included the building inspector at the time, Travis Daniels, I know that Scott was not here at the time, that the mayor was involved in that meeting, the chief of police, the fire chief at that time, which I believe that's changed since then, but every department head has their own login to be able to update this site, as they seek that, if there is the information that's on that site was accurate at the time of doing it, but this whole site was built in such a way so that the city could update and maintain it and change information to keep it current. Now, we have always been, our company has always been willing, if there was ever any question asked, that we would always be willing, we don't charge for technical support to the city. You know, we've never really done that. If you have a question, call us, we'll help you answer it. If you have something, that the city has ever wanted to do something new, then, then yeah, we'll help you figure out how to do it. The only thing that we are currently paid to do is, the A and P pays us to teach the event stage update. That's the only thing that we currently have a contract to keep updated. The reason I actually was, helped develop this, the reason is there's information that for the last few months, we've been getting requests, you know, can we see the city budget? Can we, you know, what's the information that we get every month, you know, where, you know, this is all publicly available information, none of this is secret, so I thought this would be a great way to put it out in the open, to make it easy. I can guarantee you, knowing that website, knowing all this, it shouldn't take one person more than an hour each month to do this. It's not a very large job, and that's all I have to say about that.
I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one of my questions, but I'm asking a girl in this council and community, who, who updates this webpage right now? Who does?
It was designed so that the city and its staff can keep it updated.
I'm actually, who, who is the secretary for this, who's up there?
Who's assigned to?
Yeah, me, there'll be somebody as well. I'm actually, who's doing it?
Well, curve to Ms. Williams, nobody's doing it.
The police department, the police department decided to do their own publicity, the fire department decided to do their own publicity, for whatever reason, the administration has been the one that, when I got in, and I guess, we noticed that the information was not up to date, we asked about what does that contract cover? And when I learned that, the order for, our video qualities were too low to put on the webpage, am I correct?
I mean, you can put it on there.
But we were told that the quality of it was not, I was told.
It is S D quality, standard definition quality.
So I was told that order for our actual meetings to be placed on the webpage, that we have to contract to do that, to add that service. I wasn't told that.
I'm not, you might have misunderstood what he said.
Okay, I promise. So is that included in that? What is, it's specifically worded. It was also going to drop out of mood, and that'd be one more problem I'll have, one more assignment I'll have, I'm having a hard time finding lunchtime now.
This specifically does not list the video at all.
Well, but we talked about the updates of the information and things like that, we had, we had a meeting where we came in, and I was asking for all of those things at one time, and so we called everybody in, and when we got things with the, the city administrated, it was the only group who decided to use the word press format that you were talking about. Everybody else said, thank you for meeting, and they went on their way, so when they did that, I just soon said, since I don't want another word press, and two people were giving me the sign, the signing, the signing that I knew of, and that was Travis and Amy. I don't know about the fire department, the police department, all of them getting.
I think there was a whole list of them.
Okay, well, I'm saying that for me, I was sure that was true, because those were the two people that I was trying to contact in order to get things updated. I misunderstood, because I thought that there was, I would have picked that there was another charge, but if all of that is included in it, and the way it's worded to say the city, if that means that I'm responsible, then I would want to change the wording just a little bit, I'd be happy to receive credit for it, the money's not mine, somebody's going to whoop some, some material, and when they get ready to fuss about not seeing a piece of paper, I'm not the one who will ultimately make sure that that piece of paper gets on there, so I think that the wording of it, it will just say that it'll be done, because shall is a very powerful word in legalities. That means whether you got a job or not, you still shall pay tax for it, shall don't care if you don't have a job, you gonna pay the tax for it, and it's different from the word will. So, this is a, an assignment that if we, who was doing it, which is one question he's asking, who, whose legs are we going to span when it's knocked down twenty four hours in advance, if that information is already made available? I don't want to be solely responsible, I can make sure somebody does it, but I don't want to be that person. I got a couple more questions. The contract, is this thing, you're in the contract that you're in commission, have this year, I mean, we did, we did, I know you've been doing this for a little bit, but when exactly, you're on the board eight years, and I don't remember A and P, kind of.
I'm sorry, what's your exact question?
You got on a year contract, what kind of contract do y'all have? With A and P?
With A and P. If.